This meeting of the Dunn County Board of Supervisors, January 20th meeting to order, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for putting that flag up. Julie, do you have the roll?
Supervisor Johnson?
Here.
Chairman Bartlett?
Here.
Supervisor Hedlund?
Here.
Supervisor Score?
Here.
Supervisor Steen?
Here.
Supervisor Zons?
Here.
Supervisor Gary Bjork?
Here.
Supervisor Maves?
Here.
Supervisor Quinn?
Here.
Supervisor Rogers?
Here.
Supervisor Anderson?
Here.
Supervisor Kinnear?
Here.
Supervisor Crumry? Supervisor Calabrese?
Here.
Supervisor Keeter? Supervisor Keeter?
Here.
Supervisor Vogel?
Here.
Supervisor McCullough?
Here.
Supervisor Story? He's here. Supervisor Vandermeulen?
Here.
Supervisor Niehoff?
Here.
Supervisor Morehouse?
Here.
Supervisor Kennedy?
Here.
Supervisor Tripp?
Here.
Supervisor Prochnow?
Here.
Supervisor Jensen?
Here.
Supervisor Larry Bjork?
Here.
Supervisor Bauer?
Here.
Supervisor Lino? Supervisor Lino?
I haven't seen him.
Supervisor Hartung?
Joe was on.
He keeps still having issues with his audio.
Okay. Yeah, Joe was on. All right, we have a quorum. Moving on to approval of the minutes, number four.
I saw move.
Supervisor Steen moves, supervisor...
A second.
Uh, Jensen seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Presentations of petitions, memorials, and other communications. Recognizing the retirement of county employees, Bar Blandy, forty-three years, Carl Dix, thirty-five years, Kelly Stark, thirty-three years, Greg Lambert, twenty-eight years, Mark Bayer, twenty-six years, and Eric Edgberg, twenty-six years. My gosh, isn't that a lot of years of experience that we're losing? Why, like, what can we say except give them so much thanks for their service county for all these years? I, I truly wish, uh, they could be here in person and we could thank them in person. Kelly stopped in today at the office and we got to thank her in person, but, uh, I had, uh, mentioned that if any of them are coming into Kim to let me know, I would like one of us to be there to thank them. But anyway, so much thanks for that and such a a long commitment of service. Moving on, anything else?
Nothing for me.
Okay, public comments, did we have any, Krista?
There are no public comments.
All right. Appointments, you should have all gotten that emailed to you. Uh, ADC Advisory Committee, appoint to fill on expired term of Liz Lavaro, Margie Hagman, and Indian Head Federated Library System Board, uh, to reappoint Supervisor Tripp. Uh, these appointments need Chair Board could confirmish confirmation. Uh, so if I need a, I need a motion to this fact, please. Supervisor McCullough moves. Supervisor Johnson seconds. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, look, other appointments, Local Emergency Planning Committee to appoint to fill on expired term of Gerald Leff, uh, Brian Morris, Morris, and Veteran Service Commission term expires, uh, November twenty-twenty-three, reappoint Dudley Markham. Uh, these are just, uh, appointments by the Chair. And then we have one other appointment, uh, this month. It's a county manager appointment, and that's for Child Support Director, uh, Josie Liberty. And, uh, I need a motion to that, to, uh, accept that. So Carl Vanderhelm, uh, moves and Supervisor Morehouse seconds. And any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Moving into report of our county manager, COVID-nineteen update.
Oh, good evening, everybody. It's nice to see you after our, our break. Last time we got together was in, uh, November. Um, this morning, I sent out an email to everybody, uh, just to capture, uh, as I do, uh, kind of our status here with the pandemic in Dunn County. Uh, as of today's date, we have confirmed total of three thousand eight hundred and seventy-five, uh, persons who have contracted the virus. Uh, by way of getting a, a grip on this, two months ago, November twenty, around the time, last, a little after the last time we met, uh, we were at two thousand two hundred and seventy-five. So in two months, we had sixteen hundred additional cases of COVID. People, fortunately, we've got well over ninety-five percent of recovery rate, and that's good, but we have had tragically twenty-five deaths, uh, from COVID-nineteen in Dunn County. Um, we also updated people that UW Stout, which has been providing antigen testing to the public, uh, their last day to do so will be this Friday, uh, of January twenty-second. After that, Stout will be to continue testing only its students and faculty. Our Public Health Department has received, uh, vaccine and is setting up to begin distributing that to healthcare providers who are unaffiliated with, like Mayo or Marshfield. Uh, to date, we have administered one thousand two hundred and eighty-nine doses of vaccine to residents of Dunn County. Uh, for comparison, in all of Wisconsin, the latest numbers were two hundred and forty-four thousand doses in the state. Um, but of those, some forty thousand, a little over forty thousand people have completed the full round, that has gotten the booster as well. Uh, this is all in the context, of course, of COVID-nineteen across the entire nation. We passed that grim milestone on Tuesday of over four hundred thousand people having died from this virus. We are hopeful that we will be, uh, see a ramping up of the distribution of the vaccine. We're certainly trying to do our part locally. It is complex. One type of, uh, vaccine has to be treated one way, the other type has to be treated a different way, and you've got to have the systems in place to handle it. But we are hopeful that we, that it'll be ramped up. In the meantime, everybody is encouraged to continue with the safety practices we've all been doing for months. Um, we don't want to drop the ball this late in the game. Uh, that concludes the comments on COVID-nineteen, unless there are any questions.
Paul, I have a, I have a question. Is, is there any idea when the general public will be able to get the vaccines?
Uh, anything that I would say Supervisor Kennedy would be speculation. The hope is by summer, it would be widely available to anybody who wants it, but that is a hope. And, um, I'm certainly not, uh, advising anybody to, you know, that it's going to be done by that time. We're, we're hopeful.
I add, add something to that. Um, I became aware of, uh, a website or that the health provider had a, had a, a spot that you could go in and, and schedule an appointment. You really couldn't schedule an appointment, you put yourself on the waitlist. And I did that about a week ago, or maybe a week and a half ago. It wasn't a long, long time, but anyway, I got a call yesterday and I got scheduled for, uh, February second. And I think my second shot is February twenty-third. So I think they are starting. Uh, it was announced yesterday that everybody over sixty-five was in that group. So if you, if you haven't done that, you may want to check with your health provider and see if you can, uh, put your name on a list. Dave? Hold on, Carl. I see Carl and then Mike. Go ahead, Carl.
That's my question, too. I think there's a lot of uncertainty about, uh, what we have to do. Well, you know, is somebody going to call us, or do we sign up somewhere? Uh, I, I wonder if, uh, that information can be at least placed on the county health's, uh, department site so that people know what they're supposed to do.
We can, uh, we can maybe, uh, check with KT if she could find out exactly what you're supposed to do and, uh, do that, that's a good idea, thank you. Mike, you had a question?
So is there a way, Paul, you can keep us a little more updated on the, how many of the members of Dunn County over sixty-five that are getting vaccinated and what their status is? Kind of our high-risk group?
I can certainly make the inquiry to KT Gallagher, our Director of Public Health.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, uh, go ahead, Paul.
Supervisor McCullough, I just wanted to add a little tiny piece of information. Uh, the one B, which is the over sixty-five and a couple of other groups, it's gonna, what I, what I was reading yesterday from the, the Stout folks is it will vary some depending on who your health provider is. So Mayo doesn't want you to contact them, they're planning on contacting you. Um, I, I don't know that not contacting them wouldn't be the best way to go anyway, but it will vary some by, uh, exactly how you were scheduled to do it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, if there's no other questions, uh, Mr. Miller, you can move on to your report.
Okay. Uh, item two concerns a couple of special meeting dates for county board meetings. The Executive Committee this month, um, determined that it is appropriate to ask that we put a special meeting on February the twenty-second at seven PM to present the twenty-twenty-one Dunn County Legislative Agenda to our elected officials. Um, the email from the county clerk was sent to each of you, asking you to reply to the email. Uh, that will be the petition that is necessary. A majority of supervisors must approve a special meeting for it to take place. So if you have not responded to that email, please do so. Again, that's February twenty-second at seven PM. It will be a virtual meeting, and we've already, uh, gotten some confirmations from state senators and, uh, representatives that they will attend to hear our slate of legislative items and to give their comments. A second special meeting date was talked about, uh, in October. As we had to do in twenty-twenty, we need to move the October date of the county board meeting one week earlier than the normal schedule. We normally meet on the third Wednesday, as you know. We have to do it on the second Wednesday in October in order to provide enough time between that meeting when we present the, uh, final draft of the budget and the November mandated meeting, which is November nine, I think. We have publication notification requirements, minimum number of days in order to accommodate that. The October meeting needs to be earlier. So that petition will be coming out later, obviously, in the year, but both of those items, uh, have been talked about, and you may want to note the October thirteenth, um, meeting as opposed to, uh, the October twenty, which would be the regular schedule. Any questions on that? If not, I'll move on. We had a couple of key, uh, turnovers and at, at management level. Um, Dan Prestebok, the longtime county conservationist, you'll recall, retired, uh, last year, at the end of the year. Uh, we were able to say goodbye to him in November. Uh, since then, we have offered the job of county conservationist, and it has been accepted by Chase Cummings. He's the county conservationist in Pepin County, and he accepted the position. Uh, he will start on the twenty-seventh of January. Uh, he comes to us with a great deal of experience, and he is a Dunn County resident. Uh, we think he's going to be a very good fit, uh, for our program. We also, uh, hired a new transit manager after the departure of Dolly Catlin. Austin Witt, who had been working in the office, uh, for transit, uh, was interviewed and hired and has already begun his duties as the transit manager. And then finally, as you saw in the list of retirements, Eric Edgberg, our Chief Information Officer, uh, retired at the, uh, end of the year. And so we have scheduled, in fact, we're going to be conducting interviews to replace the Chief Information Officer this Friday. So wanted to keep you apprised of some of those key positions in staff.
Are there any questions?
Go ahead.
Chairman? Yes. Supervisor Bjork?
Yes, my agenda says Chief Financial Officer.
That's because it's an error.
Yeah, there was...
A corrected agenda. That was, uh, believe me, our Chief Financial Officer's job is still secure. Uh, Keith Stri is still working for us. That was a, an error on that agenda, and it was corrected by a subsequent agenda that was distributed and published.
Good, I missed that. I like seeing that yellow Mustang sitting out there.
All right, if not, bother, continue, please.
And then finally, we have the, uh, purchase orders over forty thousand dollars. You should have that in the packet of materials that were provided to you for this meeting. Most of them are pretty self-evident. As always, the Highway Department, uh, has some large purchases for paving, hot mix, um, pulverizing, and, uh, a brine maker. Uh, we also have a couple of hauling costs for solid waste, bearing in mind that there's different kinds of things that are hauled out. Now that we have ceased operations at the transfer station, we still have cleanup to do. So materials that had been collected still have to be packaged and hauled away. So that's what those are about. Any questions on the purchase orders over forty thousand? If not, that concludes my report.
Thank you. And now we'll move, well, we'll move to the reports of departments. We have the Dunn County Housing Authority, uh, report in our packet. If there are any questions on that, uh, please, uh, ask them, to, uh, one of the committee members or to the, to the program staff, Tammy Julia Lavaro. Moving on to ten, Consideration of Resolutions, Reports, and Ordinances from the Standing Committees. Uh, Committee on Administration, Administration Resolution Amending the Inventory of the Job, uh, Classifications. Supervisor Hedlund, I do not see you.
There he is.
I...
Do you...
There you are.
David?
Yes, and, uh, you move, I assume?
Right, I, so move.
And I need a second. Uh, Supervisor McCullough, seconds. And speaking to the resolution, Supervisor Hedlund.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, if you'll note, there are two positions on that, uh, uh, we are requesting. Uh, one is a management position. That is management of, uh, in the accounting department. Um, a few years ago, we rearranged the accounting department to make it a general department and brought it into the county building. And, uh, at that time, we felt we eventually would, uh, declare someone or hire someone to be the, uh, manager of that department. Uh, and we never did. And so now, uh, it's pretty necessary that we do that and have someone to help, uh, our CFO out. Second position is that of, uh, uh, working with the, uh, health department along with the COVID team, uh, as a contact tracing. And obviously, it's something we didn't hope would have to last this long, but it has. And so, uh, we needed to, you know, create that position. Any questions?
Any questions for anybody? If not, uh, Supervisor Rogers?
Is that position for the COVID team, um, temporary or permanent?
It creates a, a permanent classification. It does not create permanent employees. So this is, this simply creates the category so that we have it hopefully, um, before the end of the year. We don't have anybody who's doing contact tracing, but we'll have the position in place as an administrative description of a job classification that can be utilized in the future if it needs to be.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor, uh, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Resolution passes. Moving on to ten B, Judiciary Law Committee. Uh, ten B one, Supervisor Tripp.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to table this resolution.
All right, uh, is it correct thing to table or just take it back to committee? Table, we have to put a special date on it, right? I don't know if you are.
I would recommend that you motion to return it to the committee.
Right.
Uh, that'll be my motion to return it.
Okay. All right. I'm on now. Can we have a second to that motion, then?
Yes, I can do it.
Supervisor Vandermeulen. Uh, any discussion?
Mr. Chair, if I might?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, you were at the, uh, legislative briefing this morning, and you're also well aware of them that they're going in a slightly different direction on this issue. Uh, so once they get that straightened out, I think we'll come back with a resolution supporting, uh, what the county's association, uh, wants to do. And basically, their approach to this issue at present is some funding to establish the program and then a continuous funding stream. Uh, so at this point, I think this resolution is moot and we'll move on from there. Thank you.
Thank you. No, move to send it back to committee. Am I, no, uh, am I on? Yes. Okay. Yes, they did. Uh, yeah, there was a motion to refer it back to committee. Um, the initial was table, but that's incorrect, um, right. Motion. So you, you can, you can ignore that. The chair ruled it out of order. And, and Supervisor Tripp changed it. Okay. All right, we got it clarified, all in favor, to move it back to committee? Say aye.
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 Uh, opposed? All right. Moves back to committee. Uh, ten two, Resolution Supporting Increased Funding for the Child Sup- County Child Support Programs. Supervisor Tripp moves. Uh, Supervisor Morehouse, seconds. Uh, speaking to that resolution, Supervisor Tripp, maybe, or?
Um, if I might just for a minute, many of you will recognize this. It's almost identical to a resolution we passed a few years ago. Uh, the numbers are a little bit different, but what we're asking for is an increase in, uh, state funding for our child support program. Uh, state dollars into the county, uh, also translates to additional federal dollars. And these are dollars that have a return of about seven dollars of, uh, child support money for every dollar we spend. Uh, so this is really a, a valuable program, and of course, the beneficiaries are, are kids who need help. So I encourage your support.
Any questions, discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Resolution passes. Uh, ten C, Executive Committee, Resolution Supporting the Creation of a Rail Commission. I need a... Supervisor McCullough moves. Uh, Supervisor Quinn, seconds. Uh, speaking to this. Um, I don't know if I should speak to it, or?
I can, if you'd like.
Okay. Mr. Miller will speak to this.
Um, again, those of you who have been on the board for a long time are, are familiar with this, uh, goal of commuter rail, at least between Eau Claire and the cities, uh, or even potentially at its most extremes, from Chicago through Milwaukee up, uh, up through to the cities. Um, this is the latest effort to see if, uh, something can get off the ground. Um, St. Croix County, Chippewa County, Dunn, uh, Pierce, uh, and Eau Claire Counties, along with the cities and villages on the, the track, including Menominee, have all been asked to pass a resolution of this type, supporting the creation of the Chippewa-St. Croix Rail Commission, which would act as a body for trying to pull together all the various, uh, elements to, to try to realize commuter rail. The resolution does not obligate Dunn County to any funds at this time. It simply, uh, says that we support the creation of the commission and agree to participate if it gets underway. Uh, the details will come out after that. Uh, as I say, it's been a very long dream, uh, to see this happen. It remains to be seen if it can, if it can happen. We have supported this in the past, and we're being asked to support it again.
Are there any questions? If not, oh, Supervisor Bjark, Larry Bjark.
I don't... I, I guess I have a few questions. I've, um, been looking on the map of where the counties lie, uh, where this rail line. Uh, and if you look at the miles through St. Croix County, the miles through Dunn County, and the miles through, uh, Oakdale County, they're approximately the same, about thirty miles to twenty-two miles. But I really don't find, find it to be a dream for the, for the communities and the people that have to live and work around, uh, high-speed rail. I see it as a, uh, a safety measure. And, uh, I'll just give you one example. Town of Spring Brook and, uh, uh, southern part of Elk Mountain is, is my district. And for example, if they follow, uh, the corridors that they're talking about, uh, just for example, the Elk Mountain School System is on the north side of the tracks. So all the people that live in the town of Spring Brook, for the south side of Elk Mountain, that have, uh, family members going to and from the high school or the grade schools, I'll have four grandsons. They have two- They have to anticipate, you know, another uh hazard uh high-speed rail, and we hear all the time about uh rail accidents where people are not uh accustomed to uh the speed and the size and and how close the rail is. Um, so I see it as a a as a serious, serious uh additional safety situation to the residents of Dunn County. And not alone to, you know, what's it going to cost Dunn County to to put in uh either more rail crossings or closed township roads? But I don't see it as a dream. I see it as a nightmare, and I'm really sorry that we that we feel that it's uh so important for very few people to impose their will upon majority.
All right, I I could respond with one thought, Larry, that this is probably going to happen whether we pass this resolution or not. They're going to it's it's something that's been going on for quite a while, and right now they're they're uh creating this commission so that we can work together. If we don't, if we don't pass this, we won't have a representative at the table. And we're not, they're not doing anything other than talking right now, but at least if we pass this and we join this, there's no cost, except the cost of having somebody go to the meeting and be at the table to represent us. And maybe if we have representation there, we can bring up some of those uh items that you just brought up. If we don't have somebody at the table, then they're going to do whatever they want through Dunn County, and we're not going to have any representation. So maybe it's, maybe it's good that we have, that we do pass this with even your thinking, you know, thinking what you're, the items you brought up. Any other discussions? Supervisor Quinn?
I I agree with your point, Trip, Mr. Chairman. Uh, also, this is not, keep in mind, this is not high-speed rail. This is commuter rail. So it'll be going at a normal rail speed, more or less, uh on existing track. There will be rail crossings that'll be affected, but it's really not a intense amount of back and forth traffic. The other thing is that the corridor between Eau Claire and the Twin Cities is one of the busiest commuter corridors in the country. I think it's like fifth busiest in the whole country, something like that, or top ten anyway. So there's a real there's a real problem. Lot, a lot of people use that freeway, and this would this could, depending what, how the study goes, as the chair points out, it could provide a real benefit to those people uh or not, depending on, again, how the study comes up. But there there are both positives and negatives. I understand that, Mr. Bar.
Any other discussion? Supervisor uh Jensen, I believe it was, and then Supervisor Trip?
Yeah, I um, my question is, is is this all funded by the taxpayers in that county where the rail would travel through? And is there any financial kickbacks on any of the counties on the fee to ride in that?
Right now, that is.
Do you know that?
No, that's, that's, none of that has been discussed. This is just starting a discussion. It started years ago, and then it was kind of dropped. It was kind of turned into a private thing. It never got off the ground. Now they're just going to start discussion again. There's no discussion about about uh that the county would have any expense to it. There's no discussion about whether the county would make any money on it. There there's no, there's been no discussion at that. This just puts it puts us, it gives us someone at the table for those discussions of those questions that you just asked. If we don't pass this, we don't have someone at the table during the discussions. Uh Supervisor Trip, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for your comments regarding the the idea of having someone at the table for a discussion of this. Uh, one of the, one of the things I think that we can consider is that uh change is inevitable, and anytime there's change, there will be some winners and some losers. Our role as uh supervisors and officials and government uh representatives is to make sure that we maximize that benefit and minimize the the harm to any individual. Um, one of the things I'd like to compare uh the potential for commuter rail um is a a few years ago, when we were talking about locating sand mines, both in the county and surrounding the county, and somebody who's more familiar with the transportation system than I am can tell you uh how many trains were added to the schedule and how much more train traffic there was. And of course, some people uh suffered from that a little bit, but uh overall, I think with good management, Dunn County uh reaps some benefit from that. Uh, just as I think the county as a whole would reap some benefit from an effective commuter rail line. Uh, and again, Mr. Chair, I appreciate your comments because frankly, uh this puts us at the table. This gives us a chance to help set an agenda. Uh, there will be expenses to the county if this goes through. Uh, in the past, we've talked about things like uh 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 rails crossing county roads, uh all that kind of thing, but there is some potential benefit as well. So I hope that we keep an open mind on this. I hope that we stay in the game, and I hope that we are able to do the best we can. Uh, because if this change is indeed coming, gives us an opportunity to help manage it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Supervisor Larry Bjork?
I've got a question about the county representative at the table. I think it's Mr. Trip. Uh, I see in the minutes that there are thirteen municipalities, and ten of them have to pass. So what was the discussion at the table about uh why ten rep, ten municipalities or counties have to pass it for it to be in play, not the entire group? Why, why is it not an unanimous group that decides this is what we want to do?
Uh, the way I understood, I I was at that meeting, and they didn't explain why they came up with a minimum of ten. I would assume that they felt they needed so many municipalities to join the group to make it uh viable to even meet. But I don't know that. Uh Supervisor Steen, you had a?
Yes, I I'd like to, I'll vote in support of this resolution. I think long term uh we should be looking at this, and it's, I think it'll be advantageous to uh our county and other counties that are along the route. And I think we would be foolish if we didn't want to sit in on it and see where we're going to go. And secondly, there'll be no money spent by Dunn County unless it's brought to Dunn County and the supervisors approve it. Uh, I think I'm correct in saying that, so.
Yes, totally. Any other discussion? Oh, we've had a lot of good, good discussion and good questions, so I will call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Supervisor Bjork, are you opposing? Okay, one opposed. Uh, the resolution passes. Thank you. And let's see, we are at the bottom of our agenda, it looks like. Uh, announcements, next county board meeting is uh February seventeenth. Uh, we talked a little bit before the meeting started with a few of us, but uh county computers for the supervisors are in, and you can pick them up. When you pick yours up, make sure your name is on it. Evidently, there's a, each one of us has a name, and uh I handed one out to Supervisor Morehouse this today around noon, and uh I just grabbed a box. I I didn't realize that everybody had their own name on it, so I I apologize that you have to come back. Uh Supervisor Morehouse.
Actually, excuse me, when you get them, when you turn them on, it has your name as the administrator of that computer.
Oh, I see. Okay, already set up for you. All right. Well, that's good. They're they're way ahead. Um, also, the the February meeting that uh Mr. Miller mentioned, uh, if you're looking for that email, Julie says she sent it out last Thursday. So sometimes for me, if I have the date of what day to look when that was sent out, it helps uh find it. So I am mentioning that. I have nothing else. Does anybody else have any announcements?
I just have one more thing to say about the laptops.
All right.
If you pick up your laptop, there are laptop bags. You can also grab one of those.
Yep. All right.
Supervisor Keeter?
Sue, yes, Don, go ahead.
Just, just a question, um, should we make an appointment, phone ahead before we go and pick it up, or should we just phone in when we get to the entrance?
I guess you can just phone in when you get to the entrance. That's what I was told today.
Okay, who would we phone?
Administration.
Administration?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Uh Supervisor McCullough?
Just a quick note, I think a number of us need to pick up stuff from our mailbox, so that might be a thing to pick up when we stop at the laptop.
Yes, thank you for reminding me that. Uh, yes, there's some mailboxes that are awful full. Have have some stuff from a long time ago, so please uh pick that up. Supervisor Morehouse?
Um, I will just say when I called Kim this morning, she she's, she was the only person in the office and has to arrange for phone coverage while she goes down to pick up our mail and goes across the hall to pick up our computers. So, Don, I think, call her and and let her know when you might be able to come in. I think that would be um prudent for our staff.
And that's why she got me to help her, uh, Kim.
Right?
Uh, Kim in the office and uh.
Kim.
Yeah, Kim.
Call, call Kim, okay.
Right.
We are operating on a skeleton staff, so.
Uh Supervisor Vandermeil?
Yeah, one additional question on the computers. Uh, the second time I went into it, Microsoft uh asked me to do a Microsoft login. I just skipped that. Uh, but I don't, I don't know if we're supposed to use that or not.
Krista, can you answer that?
Um, I I couldn't hear that. What?
It was, do do they have to, do supervisors have to do the Microsoft login if they are prompted to do so?
Um, I am unsure about that. I can ask one of the tech guys tomorrow, and I can email you, Carl, and let you know.
If you would email all the supervisors so that they know.
Very well.
Thank you.
Anything else? Well, thank you, everybody, for your time. Thank you for everybody that is listening and for staff that is listening. Thank you, and uh hopefully, hopefully with the uh vaccine coming, that hopefully we'll be able to meet in person uh sooner than later. Thank you very much. Bye, all.
Bye, stay healthy.
Bye.